It's okay. Okay, good evening, everybody. We're going to begin the public forum for this evening. My name is Chris Pia, Council Chair. Today is July 12th, 2021. It is 6:45 PM. I'll call the public forum to order. Ms. Paquette, Council Clerk, just picked up the sign-up sheet. So hang on one second. As always, we'll stick to the rules. Three minutes. Just state your name and your address for the record when you come up to the podium, please. All right. First participant, Immaculate Ken.
Good evening. My name is Immaculate Ken, 234 Klondike Street, Stratford, Connecticut. Can I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
I am here today to speak to you, our council. And our Madam Mayor is not here, but I would want to address her as well regarding my concern for our shared community. The mayor's office, according to the town charter, empowers and makes responsible the mayor to submit a budget, to oversee the interactions between various boards and commissions, and a responsibility for appointing or managing the hiring of department heads. In the last few months, we've seen another budget come and go. And again, that budget has passed with this council representing a tax cut, even though the average Stratford resident seeing an increase in dollars coming out of their pockets. That budget again shows a lack of commercial development despite the efforts of this administration's appointed economic development officer. I saw disagreements and posturing between the Board of Ed and the council that weren't resolved. And I see a general lack of accountability by all parties. But at the last council meeting, even with our community going into the distress municipality lists, despite all the previous mentioned missteps, I saw this council push through a pay increase for the mayor. So I have come to ask this council a question. Where is the accountability? Where is it? Who here is looking out for the average people in Stratford? I'm a union rep in the public health sector. So let me stop you before you try to tell me about the difficulties COVID has inflicted in our communities. I know better than any story you'll try to sell me what COVID has done to our communities. I also know about leadership and accountability. I know what looking for, out for the working families and helping our neighbors looks like. And I don't see it here in this, I don't see it coming from Stratford Town Hall. I'm here to remind this council, in the remaining five months of this council, do your job. And in case you forgot what that job is, it is to look out for the people of Stratford, all of us, all of us. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mitzi Antezo.
Actually, my real name is Mary Ann, but anyway. I live at 367 Windsor Avenue at Paradise Green. The first thing I wanted to mention, because the tragedy that has occurred in Surfside, Florida, I began to wonder, do we have any laws governing inspection and remediation of high-rise buildings, apartments, and condos? I don't know. I'd like an answer to that. Now, the main thing I was going to talk about was, I'm quoting from the RFP. This was listed in the paper in May, I believe. Quote, "The town will work with a selected developer to determine a cost-share agreement on the subterranean parking model." Earlier, an engineering report showed the water table level to be 12 to 14 feet below the surface. However, we've had dry weather. I don't know if anybody looks at the statistics, but we've had dry weather for a couple of months until just recently. And in the storm that just went through, we had five inches of rain. Now, how would that affect the groundwater levels under that building? And would the town, since we're, what we say we were going to be a cost-share agreement, would we be liable for any damage to vehicles? And we would be the Stratford taxpayers. I would like to find out about that. I think that's very important. And the, I don't know if anybody's done a newer water table examination, but it is something to consider since we're going to be sharing the cost of the underground, underground parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitzi. Next up, I have a Mr. Fuchs, Tom Fuchs. If you could just state your name and address for the record, sir, when you get to the podium.
Hello, my name is Tom Fuchs. I live at 784 North Trail in Stratford. My wife and I are new residents to the town of Stratford. We lived in Milford for 21 years. I'd like to understand our tax structure here in this town. As you know, Milford is significantly different on a mill rate basis than Stratford is. However, when you look at the population of both towns or city, town, the population of Milford is 55,000 in 21,000 households. In Stratford, there's 52,000 people in 20,000 households. Yet the mill rate in Milford is 27.8, and the mill rate here in Stratford is 39.4. The budgets for the two towns, Milford is 221 million, Stratford is 240 million. So it's a smaller town spending more money. The mill rate is 43% higher in Stratford than it is in Milford. I've tried to do some research. I contacted the mayor's office just to try to understand what drives these taxes. So my simple request is, I'd like to be enlightened on why these discrepancies or these differences exist. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody who is in attendance that has not signed up to speak that would like the opportunity? Last call, anybody who would like to speak? No? Okay. We'll call the public forum to close at 6:54 PM, and we'll reconvene at 8:00 PM sharp for the town council meeting. Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Pia. I'm calling to order the town of Stratford regularly scheduled town council meeting. It is July 12th, 2021, and it is 8:00 PM. The first item is going to be an invocation and pledge. Counselor O'Brien.
In this month of the celebration of our independence, thank you, Lord, for the privilege of living in this great country where we have many freedoms. May we never take those freedoms for granted, but always guard them and treasure them. We pray for all those in authority. May they have wisdom and discernment as they lead. We pray our leaders make appropriate and informed decisions. We pray for the physical, emotional, and spiritual healing of our nation. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. And the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, divided, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, I'll entertain, first item on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from June 14th and June 28th. Mr. O'Brien.
Second by Laura Dancho.
Second by Councilwoman Dancho. Any discussion on that? Hearing done. Call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is the monthly TAN report. Finance Director Dawn Savo, please.
Thank you, thank you, Council Chair. The report that was included in your pony package is the actual cash as of 6:30. So you'll see the cash balance for the town as of 6:30 was $38,554,873.81. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Savo on the TAN report? Ms. Ken.
Thank you, Chairman. Hi, Dawn.
Hi.
Good cash position, about the same, I think, as we started the year with. Are we ending up in a healthy place, or do we still have outstanding or potential risks?
Well, in terms of cash, this is the actual cash position, and yes, it is similar to the beginning of the fiscal year. In terms of closing out the actual year, we don't, we won't really have an idea of that until September, because there's open encumbrances and bills that are still coming in that are for the prior fiscal year.
Any other questions for Ms. Savo? Nope. Thank you, Dawn.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Onto the mayor's report. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Chairman. For a COVID update, town hall offices remain opened to the public with appointments no longer required. We do still continue to encourage any residents who have business that can be transacted online, to do so either through email over the phone, and to use those methods that are available if possible. Visitors and staff who are fully vaccinated are not required to wear masks or socially distance. Those who are not must continue to wear a mask and maintain social distance. For our vaccination update, to date, we have vaccinated 12,312 individuals in Stratford clinics. The state has released information with how many people have been vaccinated in all Connecticut communities. As of July 7th, we have 58.48% of the town's population has been vaccinated with the first dose, and approximately 54% of the town's population has been fully vaccinated. We've had some community-based pop-up clinics as part of the Vaccine Equity Partnership Program funded by the Connecticut Department of Public Health. The Stratford Health Department has transitioned their regular weekly COVID-19 vaccination clinic operations at their main site to community-based pop-up clinics format this month. Those interested may register for a vaccine appointment in VAMS. Walk-ins are also welcome. The Stratford Health Department is partnering with Hartford Healthcare and Yale New Haven Health, as well as other local organizations, including Sterling House, the Stratford YMCA, and the South End Community Center, to promote COVID-19 vaccine and host neighborhood-level clinics. Outreach is focusing in the areas of town that have experienced disproportionate burden of disability or disease due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We recently held successful clinics at the Stratford YMCA, Lord's Kitchen, the Walden Center, in addition to those already held at the Stratford Baptist Church and the South End Community Center. Information on the pop-up clinics are available as they are planned on the Health Department Stratford remains in the gray level as we are maintaining the color-coded weekly COVID alert map tracking the average daily rate of COVID-19 cases in the community settings. Since the last town council meeting, the town of Stratford has remained at the gray level. This means that we continue to have less than five new cases of COVID per 100,000 people for an every-two-week period. Recent events, on June 18th, we celebrated Juneteenth on the town hall with the raising of the Juneteenth flag. The recognition of Juneteenth is the oldest celebration of the end of slavery in the United States and was just signed into law as a national holiday by President Biden. Special thanks goes to Town Councilor David Harden, Acting President of Juneteenth of Fairfield County, Deborah Cavenus, Juneteenth Founder Cynthia Griffin, formerly known as Godmother, and Apostle Kelvin Newton of the Greater Works Church in Bridgeport for participating in what is now an annual event in Stratford. Time for Connecticut Faster Rail Service, on June 21st, I met with federal and state leaders at the Stratford Rail Station as Governor Ned Lamont announced his administration's Time for Connecticut Plan to deliver faster train service throughout the state. Time for Connecticut is an $8 to $10 billion comprehensive investment program that, with funding, can provide additional capacity and improvement needs, frequency, and reliability throughout Connecticut. The benefits include saving 10 minutes of travel time by 2022, reduce travel time by 25 minutes by 2035, use existing assets and stay within existing right-of-way, reduce impacts of climate change by attracting more people out of their cars, improve the resiliency of the New Haven Line, provide a new fleet for faster trip times and an improved passenger service experience, improve access to education, jobs, and urban centers, support economic recovery from COVID through improved service, and generate an estimated $45,000 direct, $45,000 direct construction jobs over 15 years. I was pleased to appoint Jermaine B. Atkinson as Deputy Fire Chief for the town of Stratford. Jermaine officially took up his post on July 2nd. Jermaine has a distinguished 20-year career with Stratford Fire Department, having served as a training captain and safety officer, as well as Deputy Emergency Management Director for the town. I hope the town council will join me in congratulating Jermaine on his role as Deputy Chief. After one-year absence due to the COVID pandemic, and a one-week delay due to weather, the Stratford fireworks were held at Short Beach on Wednesday, July 7th at sundown. It was a spectacular show, and I would like to thank all the volunteers and the staff from Public Safety and Public Works, as well as our generous sponsors who gave this Celebrate Stratford event a successful return. The town once again recognized posted banners of graduating seniors from Benell and Stratford High Schools. The banners will remain displayed well into July and will be given to each student when they are removed from the lampposts. These banners will be displayed, are displayed along Main Street between Stratford Avenue, Paradise Green, and along Barnum Avenue, where it intersects with Main Street. Sikorsky had a contract announcement of $878.7 million contract with the Navy for construction of nine CH-53K King Stallion helicopters. Upcoming events, we have the farmer's market at Paradise Green, which is back every Monday from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. Those attending the farmer's market are welcome to park in the back of Stratford Baptist Church on 131 Huntington Road. The church asks that attendencies keep off the grass, and we thank the Stratford Baptist Church for providing this accommodation of parking. The Summer Concert Series is continuing with performances on Tuesdays at 7:00 PM on Paradise Green. Rain dates for all events are the following Thursday. The next performance will be tomorrow night, the Frank Porto Band. As with the farmer's market, those attending the concert events are welcome to park in the back of the Stratford Baptist Church. We again thank the Stratford Baptist Church for providing this accommodation. The Stratford Health Department is holding a blood drive in memory of Adam Scott Hidew, who suffered from a rare blood condition, and is a tribute to Adam's kind and giving spirit. The drive will be held at the Birds Eye Municipal Complex at 468 Birds Eye Street on July 19th from 9:00 to 2:00 PM. If you donate the month of July, you will receive a $10 Amazon gift card plus a chance to win gas for a year at a $5,000 value. Lighthouse tours, we are pleased to be offering a series of lighthouse, open houses in association with the Stratford Historical Society over the next several weeks, July 31st, August 21st, and September 18th. The name of open houses is a little bit of a misnomer, because though the lighthouse is not open, it is, the property is available to the public. Advanced registration was held, and tours were quickly filled up, so we are looking forward to being able to offer these in the near future and have more dates available. The South End Community Center is holding a Back to Sewell Clothing Drive. Donations are being accepted through August 12th. We are looking for donations of new clothing, public school uniforms, et cetera. Store gift cards and cash donations are also accepted. If you'd like to donate, please contact Ty Sims at the South End Community Center. Blues on the Beach, featuring music, fun, and entertainment, will take place Saturday, July 24th at Short Beach. First Insight Celebration, it will be a celebration of an early flight pioneer, Gustav Whitehead, on August 14th at the Connecticut Air and Space Center, including a replica of Whitehead's number 21 Condor Flyer on display to recognize and discuss the important local aviation pioneer. Norish Indoor Vertical Farm was exciting to represent and introduce Reverend Sarah Smith, President and CEO, and the founder of Norish Indoor Vertical Farm on June 16th at 1895 Stratford Avenue for the launch of their terrific new facility. Norish Bridgeport, Inc. is a 501(c)(3) charity committed to fighting food insecurity and established an innovative farming program in Stratford that will supply fresh produce to food pantries in the area, as well as its own Norish Bridgeport pantry. The venture, which is made possible by a generous startup grant from Elizabeth Frame Foundation, will feature three different innovative indoor vertical hyperponic farming approaches to grow a variety of vegetables. The farm will sell some of its crops to local restaurants and the local farmer's markets, and the funds that will be distributed to the rest of the neighbors in need. Pizza Co. in Stratford is already committed to purchasing upscale microgains. Reverend Smith established that the Norish indoor farm will produce 204 pounds of fresh produce a week by the year's end, and with productivity increasing in the number of pods, rigs, and containers as they expand. Produce like lettuce, baby kale, tomatoes, peppers, strawberries, cucumbers, eggplant squash, and spinach will be grown, and all will be pesticide-free. I'd like to thank local officials, including town council members Bill O'Brien, David Harden, and Caitlin Shake for joining us to welcome them to Stratford. We welcomed two new businesses, two new women-owned businesses in Stratford last week, both at 3380 Main Street. I joined co-owners of Hope Family Counseling, Monica Ben-Amy and Cynthia Ilyzer, and Oasis Physical Therapy owner, Elia Curry, and Marketing Director Nicholas Pulaski for the ceremonial ribbon cuttings to celebrate their openings. For staff news, we have Dan Brennan, who is joining us as a zoning enforcement officer. Dan has experience from Branford and Bridgeport, and has been warmly welcomed. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to appoint the following commissioners to the Commission on Aging. Elizabeth Perman Cole, Pat Coller, Andy Glad, I'm sorry, Carl Glad, Gus Kuzka, Geraldine Gemza, Kathy Vigella, Sandra Fisher, George Hangos, Chelsea Cordiac, Loretta Krasinski, Dale McLannan, Mary Sumito, and Mary Therian. That's my report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Questions for the mayor? We'll open up to the council for questions. So anyone have a question for the mayor? Mr. Taveras.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mayor. Like other Stratfordites, I got my tax bills, and I got this really nice pamphlet with a really pretty smile on here. But I want to know, and I'm using myself as an example, you're saying that there was a tax rate decrease. My taxes have gone up. For about 12 years, when Republicans have been in power, every year my taxes have gone up. I'm now retired, and I'm finding it a little bit more difficult to pay these taxes, and every time I open my bills, I got five of them, I see this saying that there's a tax rate decrease. I didn't do anything structurally to my home to mitigate an increase in my taxes, and I just want to know why. I think this is deceptive. My bills and my taxes have gone up.
So Counselor Taveras, good evening to you, too. And your tax bills went up because the value of your home went up. Your car, your car tax bills went down, and we can meet later this week if you'd like. We'll look at your tax records, and we can, you'll be able to see that. So because the value of your home went up, that's why your real estate tax went up. Your sewer taxes have not gone up. I don't believe the sewer taxes have gone up since this council has, well, this current council and the previous council have been in office. So as, as we went through with revaluation, and you know, and we gave you the charts, and we were very transparent, there were some sections of town where the value of the houses went up, and consequently, based, even though the mill rate was lower, their taxes went up.
Thank you. Through the chair, I was just using myself as an example. There's a lot of folks in, the constituents in my district that share the same situation. That thing is not just me, though, but I certainly feel for those in my district that are also retirees, and also those that have lost their job through the pandemic that are struggling. So, you know, I have empathy and feelings for them, too. I just want our town to be more, if you're going to raise taxes, that it's done equitably, and that there's some sort of relief for those that want to stay in our town, to afford to live in our town. And I also want to say that the-
Paul, do you have another question, though? Another question?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the mayor? Ms. Ken.
Thank you, Chairman. Hello, Mayor. This year, we recognized about $9 million of what I'll call outside money between the state grants and our debt service, and we use that to avoid the equivalent of a two-mill tax increase. A number of press releases from the town say that we're doing much better than other towns that have had to raise their taxes. Which towns are you referring to, and were any of them the recipients of such outside, outside money like Stratford was?
Good evening, Counselor. Thank you for the question, and I'll be happy to get back to you with those answers.
Any other questions for the mayor? Nope. Mr. Connor.
Madam Mayor, just, especially I'm going to tap into your time up at Hartford. Isn't it true that coming out of Hartford, there's a lot of mandates that get pushed down to the towns all over and the cities, and they have to be absorbed? It's easy to make rules, but then you have to pay for them, and then they come out of Hartford, which is primarily Democrat for the last 30 years, 40 years, since we've made this political tonight. Is that not true?
That is true, Counselor. We often profess not, not to like and not to vote for mandates, but in reality, that's not what has happened in the past. It's not even what happened in this last legislative session, especially with regarding police and education. So as every mandate, unfunded mandate is passed in Hartford, the town and the taxpayers and the property owners bear the brunt of that.
Any other questions for the mayor? No? Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next item on the agenda under Committee Reports is going to be item 4.3.1, the Public Works Committee. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
I'll make a motion, we approve the amount of $57,000 to Barton and Logidais for construction phase engineering services. This comes from a recommendation from Public Works Committee.
So, Mr. O'Brien, just for the record, item 4.3.1, item A, is your motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second to that? Second by Council Hardin. Any discussion? Notes from the meeting, we're vying for all the councilors? Nope? Okay. Call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Mr. O'Brien, if you'd like to make the next.
Yes, also move for 4.3.1B, Surf Avenue Culvert, additional engineering services in the amount of $58,000. Again, recommendation from Public Works.
Motion by Mr. O'Brien. Do I have a second? Second by Council Hardin. Any discussion on that item? Mr. Taveras, yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you explain exactly what the Surf Ave Culvert is? Can you explain exactly what the Surf Ave Culvert is?
Sure.
And that acronym is?
Sure. Is Renee Missara here from Public Works? If you wouldn't mind coming up, Renee.
This project is actually one of John Casey's project that's been on the books for some time. We are working in conjunction with the state, and so we were kind of hoping there were going to be some state funds that would pay for this piece to hopefully, at some point, alleviate the flooding down on that end. And unfortunately, those funds are not available, so that is why we are now putting this for here on the town side. But it is for our part of the project to alleviate that flooding over on Surf Avenue.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for this item while Missara's here? No? Okay. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Next item?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Brien.
4.3.1C, VAS Quality Works Change Orders, West Broad Linden. Should we do all four together, or?
If you'd like to. Yep.
Replace light standard in the amount of $7,311.76. Clean and TV inspect pipe along the railroad embankment, $7,375. Relocate the electrical service at strip stores, $11,748.50. And temporary vituinous overlay over winter shutdown, $20,496. This is also with a favorable recommendation from Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Do I have a second to that? Mr. Can. Any discussion? Greg.
Thank you. It's a question for John Casey, but if I could go through Renee.
Miss Sarah? Hang on one second, Greg.
Hi, Renee. This is a big project, no problem with these particular items, but a few constituents have asked me what the town's original projected cost, its share of the total cost would be, and what our actual cost will likely be when the project is completed. No answer tonight, but just some accounting on what we projected and where the actual will probably end up. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the item? No? Thank you, Renee. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. I'll entertain, the next item on the agenda is item 4.3.2.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Brien.
4.3.2A, Olympus Change Order Number 3, in the amount of $9,784.78 for asbestos removal in Baldwin Center Conference, and this is a favorable recommendation from the Building Needs Committee.
Motion made by Councilor O'Brien. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilor Harden. Any discussion on the item? No? Okay. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Next item, Mr. O'Brien.
4.3.2B, Olympus Change Order Number 4, in the amount of $6,106.37 for Baldwin Center renovations in the multipurpose room lobby. Offices 207 and 09, and bathrooms. Again, favorable recommendation from Building Needs Committee.
Okay, motion by Mr. O'Brien. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Danchow. Any discussion on the item? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Next item?
And one more favorable recommendation, 4.3.2C, Olympus Change Order Number 5, in the amount of $9,800 for rework on the Baldwin Center doors.
Motion by Mr. O'Brien. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilor Harden. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance. I'll entertain a motion for approval. Excuse me, motion by Councilor Perillo. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilor Harden. Any discussion on the item? Mr. Can.
Thank you, Chairman Pia. The rules related to this item, this ordinance, are much longer than what's presented here. Everything that we saw, for example, in the ordinance committee, that will be recorded in the town code, or is it just these two paragraphs?
You're referring, so I'm clear, you're referring, it won't be, this is just an ordinance just for the fee structure. The actual regulation that the traffic authority passed and approved is going to be in the minutes of that, and I know I've been speaking with Chief McNeil about making it very clear so people know exactly what the rules are, but this is just the ordinance for the fee structure.
Very good, just so people know where to go to-
Yeah, we're, yep, understood. Any other discussion on the item? No? Okay. We'll call, Ms. Pickett, this will be a roll call because it'll be, yep, Ms. Pickett, we'll do a roll call vote.
Ms. Shake?
Yes.
Mr. Taveras?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Can?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Danchow?
Yes.
Chairman Pia?
Chair votes aye.
9-0.
Motion passes 9-0. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda will be item 4.3.3.2. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Danchow.
Motion to approve item 4.3.3.2, an ordinance creating an American Rescue Plan Act Fund.
Motion-
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Shake. Any discussion? Again, we talked about this in ordinance, this is just creating a line item to receive the funds. Pretty straightforward. Okay, we'll call for a vote. Again, this will be a roll call vote. Ms. Pickett.
Ms. Shake?
Yes.
Mr. Taveras?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Can?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Danchow? Chairman Pia?
Chair votes aye.
9-0.
Motion passes 9-0. Thank you. Next item under 4.4 is going to be the Town Attorney's Report. Town Attorney Chris Hodgson.
Thank you, Chair. I have a report for the month of June. Town Attorney's Office recovered the sum of $18,687 in a real estate tax foreclosure. The Town Attorney's Office recovered the sum of $2,000 for property damage to town property. The Town Attorney's Office paid out the sum of $2,686 for WPCA sewer backup claim. We had three liability claims opened, including town tree limb damage, damage to front lawn, and damage to a vehicle from a raised manhole cover. We had two property damage claims to town property that we opened. We have 13 blight files that were opened, and there were six FOI requests. That is my report for June.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr., thank you, Town Attorney Hodgson. Excellent. So next item on the agenda will be under ordinances, resolution, item 6.2.1. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Brien.
I move that we pass regarding older Americans Title III SWCAA grant.
Motion to approve, item 6.2.1 by Councilor O'Brien. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Shake. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0.
Mr. Chairman, this is Laura Danchow.
Ms. Danchow.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to include a new item, item 6.2.2, a resolution regarding FEMA assistance to firefighters grant.
Okay, so a motion by Councilwoman Danchow to waive the rules, to amend, to add an item as previously passed out for the council, seconded by Councilwoman Shake. Any discussion to waive the rules and amend? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Ms. Danchow, if you'd like to-
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve item 6.2.2, a resolution regarding FEMA assistance to firefighters grant.
Motion by Councilwoman Danchow. Do I have, I have a second by Council, excuse me, Councilor Harden. Any discussion on the item? Nope, it's a good grant. Excellent, we'll call. So it's an amount of $28,595 from FEMA for rope rescue operations to the fire department. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Next item on the agenda is item 7.1. I'll entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Mr. Councilor Perillo? Motion to move to the planning, refer to the planning commission. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilor O'Brien for discussion. So just a little bit of background on this, this was, some of the residents had brought forth some historical perspective on an area that, and I asked Mr. Casey, it's Smith, that I provide some context to the councilors, that was included in the pony with some maps. So what we'd like to do tonight is refer this to planning, to take a look at this and ask for some public feedback, and see if it makes sense for the neighborhood. So, any other discussion on this? Ms. Can.
Thank you, Chris. For the appropriate person, does neighborhood designation have any meaning within the town code or the town charter? Any privileges or rights, per se?
Maybe a legal question, Town Attorney?
Yeah, no, this is not like you're creating a historic district or a historic neighborhood where you're coming under certain state statutes that would restrict you. It's not, that's what it is not. This is a designation, a way the community would refer to this neighborhood as an area. It's not giving any additional rights or obligations for that matter.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. Leclerc. Any other discussion on the item? No? Okay. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. We have one other-
Mr. Chairman, this is Laura Danchow.
Ms. Danchow.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include an item 7.2, a license agreement, South End Community Center.
Okay. Again, a motion by Ms. Danchow to waive the rules to add the item 7.2, a license agreement for the South End Community Center to the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perillo? I saw your hand. Any discussion to, excuse me, any discussion for amending and adding? Nope? Okay. Call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Danchow.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve item 7.2, a license agreement-
Motion to approve.
-for Alliance for Community Empowerment, Inc.,/ABCD license agreement for the South End Community Center, be hereby approved.
Motion made by Councilwoman Danchow. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilor Harden. Any discussion? So this was, again, this was Mr. Timniak, if you'd like to come up, sir. The license agreement was printed and given to the councilors, or Mr. Timniak, or Tammy, whoever you feel, if you just want to give some context on it.
Good evening, everyone. So this license agreement is for what was formerly known as the ABCD Head Start Program at the South End Community Center. Every year they've been in there, the program's working out pretty good, as far as, Tammy can give more details about it, but they have 51 slots for early learning. The program's been pretty full. This year, though, the change is that Alliance took over for ABCD, so it's now Alliance for Community Empowerment, their new name, which is why I wanted to share this with the council tonight and let you see the agreement. We got it late last week after the pony had been out, so I think it's necessary to amend the agenda to add this tonight. Tammy, do you want to add details?
No, so for our region, that is the organization that gets the federal Head Start funds, and so they operate a program at the South End and service, you know, children. So it's, you know, it's terrific to have kids in Head Start. There's a lot of evidence of how that makes a difference. So we have three classrooms, two for preschool, and one for infants that are at the center.
Thank you, Tammy. I'll open up for discussion for any councilors. Mr. Taveras.
Thank you, Chris. Is this a yearly, would this be a yearly grant or lease?
Well, it's yearly based upon ABCD getting the funding for the program. We have an agreement with them that they have the spot if they can get the funding. So it would be yearly based upon the federal funds coming in for ABCD. We don't apply for those funds on behalf of the town. We rely on ABCD, as we do other vendors, to go ahead and do that.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? This license agreement is an annual basis, though, for this license agreement?
Yes, for this one, this is, this is for Alliance Community Empowerment, which is the new company organizing it.
Any other discussion, question? Ms. Can.
Thank you, Chairman. Hi, Chris. Paragraph 12, it speaks to a playground that the licensee required to renovate the South End Community Center playground. Is that a new provision, or has that been in there for? Just trying to look for any differences between-
No. No, they would always have had access to the outdoor playground. I mean, obviously, the children need the outdoor space to play.
Mentioned that they were responsible for improve, let me get to the right page.